Three taps.
Yeah, she's got it.
She is. Okay, good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. It is October 12th. Welcome to your boardroom. It's good to see you here and we're going to start out our meeting with our roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
I am here.
And Supervisor Long.
Also present, thank you. And now we're going to have our moment of inspiration and it's my pleasure to invite representatives to this morning from the Camrio Healthcare District. As I talked last week, I think we had a grand opening for the caregivers, Wellness and Caregivers Program in, under the auspices of the Camrio Healthcare District. So Jane Rosansky, our CEO, is here from the Healthcare District. Sue Santangelo is here and our Chief Resource Officer. And Cara Partridge-Rosson, our COO, is also present. So I've asked them to come in and give you little, little highlights on this inspirational wellness and caregivers.
Yay.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and CEO Robinson. It's such a pleasure for us to be here. Ralph Waldo Emerson said, because this is the inspirational time, "Nothing of significance was ever accomplished without enthusiasm." And as you can tell, we're full of enthusiasm, especially lately. Gosh, I am Jane Rosansky. I am the CEO of the Camrio Healthcare District. Kathy Long has, has told you about Cara Partridge, who is behind me, and also Sue Santangelo, who also is the project manager for the whole center, which is important. But my gratitude to Supervisor Long for inviting us to come and share with you today some things about it. For us, the grand opening of the Wellness and Caregiver Center of Ventura County is the culmination of fearless vision, relentless determination, it took us about 15 years, and a renewed spirit of community partnership through Ventura County. Our Board of Supervisor had pursued the vision of a one-stop center for many years and we were honored to be the designated entity to establish this center for the entire Ventura County. Our gratitude to all of you who are sitting up there and also to the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging for making this a possibility for us. For the county, this grand opening represented what is real about life. Polls say that 43% of Americans are dying from at least one chronic illness or chronic disease. Now here we choose to say that 43% are going, going to become better equipped to live with a chronic disease. And for every chronic disease patient, there is most likely one caregiver. And 74% of those caregivers work a job while caregiving. The toll is great. The stress and strain is not manageable. The center is specifically designed to assist with all of those issues. And for you here, as you know, with knowledge comes the responsibility. You are now charged with spreading the word. Tell your neighbors, tell your friends, tell your colleagues and family about this Wellness and Caregiver Center for all of Ventura County. Tell them that this center is here so that all may learn, renew, and grow in health and quality of living. Tell them that there is hope. Cara Partridge will come up and say some other things about the center also. Cara?
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you and good morning. As we worked through the inevitable challenges and obstacles of building this vision and working on this project, we had the usual questions. Is this the right direction? Is this the right place? Are these the right partners, et cetera? Never once did we ask, is this the right thing? Because it just simply was. We knew from fact, statistic, research, community needs assessment, this was the right thing. And I'd like to share with you all a letter to the editor that was written from a Thousand Oaks constituent. And it says, "The opening of a county Wellness and Caregiver Center at the Camrio Healthcare District Facility shines needed light on the role's impacts and ubiquitous nature of caregiving in our society. As adults, we often transition from caring for our children to caring for our parents to caring for an aging spouse, accepting any negative effects on our lives as a personal burden to be sucked up. Resources now available through the Camrio Facility are immensely valuable in helping us manage and mitigate the risks of a role that we often cannot avoid. Caregiving is a selfless activity that saps our time, strength, emotional well-being, and social interactions nationally. Approximately 60% of caregivers die before the person for whom they are caring. The county center implements a variety of programs designed to improve that statistic for Ventura County residents. If you are a caregiver, please visit this facility on Las Poses Road and talk to the staff about the services they offer. You owe it to yourself to become acquainted with this important direction in preventive medicine." So if you, as supervisors and leaders of our entire county, wondered whether, when you were approving the actions through the various partners, the area agents on aging, whether this was the right thing, this was the right thing, you have already made a difference in this Thousand Oaks resident's life and we are so proud to share with you in making a difference for the whole county. Thank you.
Thank you, Cara.
Also, we did provide you with a packet and in the packet is information about the center. So please take it back to your offices and if you have a constituent that does ask you about it, please do pass the information on. Be very, very aware that this center is a model for the state of California. We did have five districts, another one coming next week, that came down to visit it, visit us, so that they could replicate it in their communities. So we're very, very proud to partner with you and again, we thank you so much for all you do. Take care.
Thank you, Jane. That was a startling statistic. 60% of caregivers pass before they really started. So wonderful work, thank you. A great resource.
Can I also just comment on, I think that letter the editor you read was from Nick Fatheringham. And just, what a wonderful concept, because caregivers need care too.
Absolutely.
And so often, they're just all giving and don't have an opportunity to take some time for themselves. So being able to help the caregivers and the stress that they are under is just a wonderful concept and a great model. So congratulations.
There are, thank you, and there are just incredible statistics about the rate of self-neglect in caregivers, the second-generation patient, et cetera. And if you have two statistics, maybe share two, I don't know about the caregivers.
I, I think the startling statistic that we hear and can document is that 60% of the people who are caring for their loved one pass away before their loved one does. And really, caregivers, family caregivers are the backbone to our long-term care system and we haven't built a system to support them. So through this caregiving center, we can do that. And we thank you for your support and we welcome you to come and we would be honored to give you a tour of the center. Thank you again.
Beautiful center, great job. Thank you so much.
I appreciate you bringing these ladies up because every time you see these, there's always great things coming out of these people.
Good work. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now shall we all rise for our Pledge of Allegiance? Supervisor Zaragoza?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Now we have our minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the minutes.
There's a motion to continue the minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to continue the minutes. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we have our agenda review. Good morning, Mrs. Robinson.
Yes, good morning. On closed session agenda, item 19, a name was removed from the agenda. It was entered in error. Time certain agenda, item 24, we added exhibits 39, 40, 41, and 42. Letters submitted by Stuart Greenberg, Mike Green, Philip Dunn, and John Newton. Those have all been posted. On regular agenda, item 26, there's a revised board letter.
Okay. Anything else on the agenda review?
I'd like to pull item 10 if I might.
Okay. All right, then we will, we'll hear that, that is under consent. Why don't we move ahead with the action on agenda review as revised? Motion to adopt the agenda as revised. And a second, John, Mr. Zaragoza, and please vote. Okay. And the agenda then stands under consent agenda, then we have item 10 for discussion. Anything else on consent agenda? All right, why don't we move ahead, then we hear item 10.
Yeah, I was wondering if Mr. Lankie could come up.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Honorable Board of Supervisors, and Mrs. Robinson.
Hi, good morning. I see there's a lot of different districts and special districts all going forward, municipal advisory councils for appointment in lieu of election. And I'm just wondering, you think it's because everyone's just really satisfied with those?
I wish I knew. We've got 44 of them that we're asking, obviously, your board this morning to, to approve, but I don't know and I don't want to comment.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
No further comments, questions? Okay. Then the consent agenda is before us. Motion to approve and a second. Please vote. All right, that takes care of those items. Thank you very much. We have a 10 o'clock time certain, so we'll move ahead and do our other items on the agenda. And that begins with item 25. What about what? Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, that about board comments? I, I did that last time. And public comments? Boy, I'm just, I'm sorry. I was speaking to the chamber this morning, I'm just all disconnected here. Public comments. At this time, it's an opportunity for the public to speak to the board and I would invite up Amy Walker. And I apologize for. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Amy Walker. And I'm here to address an issue concerning the bathrooms at the Foster Public Library in downtown Ventura. Over the past six months, there's been an illegal change made to the Foster Library. The Foster Library was designed with a children's area on the first floor with bathrooms appropriate for children at that area. The adults' bathrooms are on the second floor, designed away from where people sit and browse on the second floor. During the past six months, the adult computer area has been placed downstairs in the children's area next to the bathrooms appropriate for children. These bathrooms are not appropriate for the volume of adults who constantly use the computer area. The noise from toilets flushing, the use of hand dryers, and the odors from the bathrooms are loud and disturb my ability to concentrate at the computer. I believe those who designed the library did it with both children and adults in mind. I believe they designed enough space for the children downstairs. I believe they designed the upstairs for primarily adult usage. I would like to see the library changed back to the way the designers designed it. I don't think there's much work involved in changing the library back, other than moving computers, books, and some furniture. And I would like to volunteer my time to help with this project. Copies?
Thank you, Ms. Walker, for your comment.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. And no further public comments submitted? Okay. All right, then, we'll move to board comments. Supervisor Bennett? You ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll take that back here real quick. I'll just read this again. Asked the board to adjourn in memory of Jean Renel. And she's the wife of John Renel, who was a big supporter of the Oakview Boys and Girls Club. She was a published poet, a real passion for writing, personal correspondence with Maya Angelou. But she died peacefully in her sleep succumbing to her battle with breast cancer. And I think that's appropriate today as we are celebrating Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the folks on that list. Also, wanted to let you know, I had the pleasure of attending the Ventura County Employees Retirement Association Retreat on Thursday. It was a very informative session. Supervisor Foy was there also. And on Saturday, I had the sad day of attending Elena Stockdale's funeral. And the family, I think, certainly came together very, has come together very well in terms of supporting each other. And it was, I thought, a very appropriate service and it just reminds me of how important of work that we have sometimes while we're thinking about all the other things and we got a political element to it, that we got to remember just how important the everyday work of people, the 8,000 employees that we have here at Ventura County, the important work that they have to do every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of this folks on this list. And also, I'd like, I had a very busy week too. You know, we had Bi-National Health Week in Oxnard. This is to improve the health and well-being of the underserved population in, in the fifth district. Additionally, we had a beautification week, day over in El Rio, Nylin Acres, and Strickland, where we had a neighborhood cleanup program where we picked up several tonnage of refuse, including e-waste, hazardous waste, and, and we had a very, very successful cleanup there in El Rio. And I want to thank our staff, county staff, for helping us out. Additionally, over in El Rio, we had a health fair where the, at River Park, where we had the county, numerous county departments were there, serving the community county departments. Highway Patrol was there, our shows were there, the Oxnard PD was there, and numerous other agencies were there, giving out information to the kids and to, to the public. And additionally, I had, attended the fifth anniversary for EMDOT. This is an organization, Oxnard has helped over 100,000 people in the last five years with health issues, with social issues, legal, and, and other information that the community needs. And it was very well attended there at Casa Lopez and, and Oxnard. And also, I attended the 35th anniversary of Oxnard College Foundation. The foundation last year put together about $260,000 to, to assist in scholarships and paying for tuition and paying for other needs that the students need there at, at Oxnard College. It was very well attended. And additionally, I have, I'd like to share with you that we have the Green Jobs Town Hall Meeting that's going to be held on October the 20th at the Oxnard Library. And we have keynote speaker is going to be Senator Pavly and we have Don Price, Bill Camarillo from Aggraman. And it's going to be a well-balanced town hall meeting that we're going to have there at, to create jobs and to help with the climate change and, and other information that the community might, might benefit from. And we'll have numerous other things that I did at, I'll be here all morning to, to share that with you, but thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
Yes, speaking of Bill Camarillo, I was able to enjoy his presentation along with Steve Gills of Gill's Onion to, at a California Lutheran University forum where they talked about the green jobs that they're doing in terms of being able to do a lot of composting. And I've invited him out to the Las Virginas Municipal Water District,環環的Sanitation District Board meeting to talk about composting because they have a pretty unique thing where they compost all the sludge that, that they have. And it's a pretty expensive process, but you really, one of those things, you have to consider all the costs from the beginning to the end, cradle to grave, as we say. I was also able to attend with Supervisor Long a wonderful groundbreaking yesterday at California State University Channel Islands. And then also have a neat thing coming up in my district that we're putting together in the Casa Cano area in Newberry Park called Walk the Channel Day, where we're going to be opening the gates one morning and allowing people to walk along the bank be opening the gates one morning and allowing people to walk along the banks of the, it's the south branch of the Royal Cano, and bringing in experts, experts on animal life and wetlands, and as well as ecology of wetlands. We have Sean Anderson, who is doing a lot of research right now with the Gulf oil spill, an expert in wetlands. Linnea Hall, who's a doctor from the Western Foundation of Vertebrates, zoology will be there. Also, the middle school teacher out there is going to talk about plants and just a really good day of learning, as well, obviously, as our Watershed Protection District, be able to present some information about how the water gets from the city to the ocean. And it's a real educational experience in getting a lot of the students involved, too, the middle school, elementary school, and high school students, as well as some of the college students. It's a good opportunity. So many times, you know, you have these washes or creeks behind your house, you've never been able to walk out there. So this is a first opportunity to do that. Looking at wonderful things they're doing out, they've done in Camarillo, as well as in Sini, as far as putting greenways where pedestrians and cyclists can ride along those. It's a good opportunity to have more than one use, and it's not just flood control. Also, I just want to note that Oak Park is having a preparedness night, put together by all the different agencies out there, and helping to become better prepared in case of emergencies. And with that, I'll just ask that we close and honor the people on this list. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Foy.
I would like to close and honor the people on this list also. And then, we talked about service. Congratulations to this young Ymar Rivera, of 17 years old. We talked about people giving back. She won the Kohl's Kids Who Care for Positive Community Involvement Scholarship. The thing to me is that when you're 17 years old, she's already given 500 hours of time in helping people, uninsured members of the community obtain dental, medical, legal services. But you talk about, what's somebody like that going to do? You know, you think about giving 500 hours, when there's so many other things for kids to be doing. It's just great to hear that kind of stuff going on. There's a lot of people who want to give back out there. So, I mean, I just always like to congratulate those kind of people. Those are my comments.
Great. Thank you. All right, I have first a list to adjourn in memory, and two dear friends I'd like to call out, that both of them lost their lives to cancer. Elaine Pedersen, who is very active and a member of our Camarillo Rotary for decades, was very active with the Association of Realtors, both in California and nationally, and served on the St. John's Hospital Board of Directors. And for Rita Ann Craft, lived in our community for a long time, most recently, though, in Texas. She was one of the founders in the Camarillo Chamber for the Educator of the Month program that has now been going on for over 10 years. Rita was very committed to that. Also a Realtor, also a volunteer for Habitat for Humanity. So submit that list, adjourn in memory. And I attended, real quickly, the CDCR celebration that took place on Sunday at the Camarillo Ranch House. And I talked about it last week, where, as they recognized their 30th anniversary, they had a, basically, a celebration where they invited their families and children to come and celebrate. And they had vendors who donated food and entertainment and music. And 4,000 people showed up, children and families. It was great. It was great to see all the kids. And the mobile dental unit was there, and Dr. Lizagore was doing his free service of checking young kids for their dental conditions. And it was really a celebration. It was good to see such a great turnout for it. And as we all know, we have a budget, as sad as it is, and certainly one that we're still working through, as to what it means to us at the local level, particularly for Cal Works and our childcare services. As was noted by our lobbyist, it is the budget from the Black Lagoon. It's already, looking ahead to January, having a 11 or 10 or 11 billion dollar deficit. So, anyway, we'll have to work through what it is and be confronted with what we do here at the local level in response to it, so unfortunately. And I also went to Calafco Conference. As Chair of Calafco, I attended the Calafco Conference. And I'm going to provide for the board members the legislative report that came out of the conference. It gives you some highlights of the work that the Legislative Committee does on the Calafco Board, and bills that were sponsored by Calafco, those, some that were signed into chapter, and some that didn't make it through. It just gives you a sampling of the work and the challenges under Cortezinox to conduct the work of LaFcos at the local level. So there's that. And also, I brought this for you, Supervisor, the recent Sphere. The Sphere is a magazine that's produced by Calafco to its membership. And in it, it gives reports out from various LaFcos around the state that talk about best practices and things that are going on with our Calafcos. And I'd ask you all to take a special look on the Innovations in Governance section, where they report out from some counties. There was quite a focus on, at Calafco, on fire district consolidations, where municipalities and counties are looking to streamline, to look where there might be revenue savings, to look where there's perhaps a better operational model. And I was surprised, I didn't realize this was going on statewide, quite few counties moving in that direction, to consolidate into one fire district. And be interested to see what their analysis shows. And I'm not, I'm not advocating this, I'm just saying, I'm looking at a reporter here, because it has, you know, if there's any interest at all, it has to come from the cities and certainly the firefighters, to look at whether there is a, if there is a better model. But you can see it's happening in other counties and the state. So it was, and there was a full discussion, couple panels on it at Calafco. And there also were elections at Calafco. And Calafco is now organized by regions, so there's a northern, central, coastal, and southern region. And we are in the coastal region. And there are four representatives from each region now that make up the board of Calafco. This is the first time the elections were held this way. And of the nine incumbents running, seven were reelected. But there are, so there are obviously new members on the Calafco Board, which is, was the goal, I think, of really going to this election model. And out of the 16 members, eight are men and eight are women. This will be the first time in years, though, that we don't have a Ventura County representative on the Calafco Board. But that's okay. We have good representation throughout the coastal region, from Santa Barbara, Santa Clara, Napa, and Santa Cruz. So, good conference, lots of other information from it. Be happy to share with you if you have questions or an interest. And that concludes my comments. And now, now we'll move to the regular agenda. And that, again, begins with item number 25. Mr. Jackson. Sorry for that little start there.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Robinson. First of all, let me apologize for having to come in here and explain this a second time. Certainly, your jobs are challenging, and I don't certainly need to take up any more of your time than we need to. So certainly accept my apologies for that. This board letter is, so everybody is clear, especially folks who are listening in in the audience, is not asking for additional funding, is not asking for additional, for any of the projects that we are currently supporting. But our governance model indicates or suggests that the purchasing person for county, county purchasing for professional services cannot exceed $100,000. And since we are exceeding that, we are coming to the board, asking for approval to spend those dollars that have already been approved in the 10, 11 adopted budget for these projects. So with that, I know there is one question on item number five, from Supervisor Bennett's area, on the contingency of funded for the next project to be identified. And with that, we know that, just as the prior four items, that there are projects that are currently approved in the adopted budget, that just have not come to the priority level that requires our services just yet to support that area. So with that, and historically knowing that there are a number of projects that we still yet have to support, we had put those contingency funds in place.
And the source of funds, in other words, when some department comes and says, "We need your help with this project," then they will be providing the funds?
Correct.
And so we're allocating a contingency sort of amount without allocating the dollars to it?
The dollars have already been allocated to those projects.
You're just calling it out?
We're just calling it out. And we're just saying that they haven't come to us yet. But we know that, historically speaking, there's probably a number of projects that haven't come to the board yet for moving forward on. But we know that we will be involved in.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the breakdown that we have here.
Is there any questions I could answer at this time?
Other questions?
No, I just may comment. This is a great letter. It's really easy to understand and clear about what you're doing. No. My apologies for not doing this in the first time around.
And the question I have isn't related to the last time you were here, but rather overall, is this the most efficient way of doing this? Or is hindsight going to allow us to make sure that there's contingencies there originally in the budget? Or, I don't, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, it's challenging for us, because we are an ISF, meaning that we have to have a cost recovery model for everything that we do, for a chargeback. We cannot always anticipate what projects are coming. And idealistically, in the private sector, you would have, be able to grow and shrink your organization as business comes in. We can't necessarily easily do that. So what we try to do is keep a staff where we are 100% allocated to projects and platforms and technology. And when projects come in out of the blue, we try to augment that with professional services, so that we don't have to have people sitting around not doing anything, because projects are, clearly have start and stop times. So we try to avoid overall cost to the county by supplementing our staff in those areas.
So I know when we do allocate for specific projects, we also in that have a contingency. So I just want to make sure we're not doing contingencies on top of contingencies.
It really is a little bit of a misnomer. You're putting in a contingency for expansion of use of the contractors. So within his budget, if he was doing all of this internally, he would not need contractors. The contractors allow him flexibility. What he's doing here today in this, quote, contingency arena, is basically asking the board to give a little more than, authority, basically, to contract for a little more than what he's actually asking for today. So he doesn't have to come, so efficiency, he doesn't have to come back here if it bumps up another...
So it's really more of like a supplemental funding for the contractors, not a contingency in case things become more expensive than anticipated?
Right.
Which is what contingency is usually on.
This is the same kind of thing that we see with the healthcare agency, where Mike Powers would do that.
Comes in with that big list.
Big list, and if they use that service, they need to have that approved, this kind of...
Yeah, contingency to support people in professional services is a little different model than contingency than supporting spending on technology and hardware and software.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You might not even use the money, right? You just have it...
That's correct. It may happen that projects don't come up, which I'll find hard to believe, but if projects don't come up, then that spending won't occur.
But you've got to be ready for it, just in case.
Or you can handle it internally.
I can handle it internally, correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Pleasure, the board. Motion to approve the recommended action, and...
I'm happy to second, and then I'm glad that it is more clear, the report, as well as the motion itself. So I appreciate that.
Right. We've learned our lesson, we won't make that same mistake.
A motion and a second. It's complicated. Please vote. And that passes unanimously.
May I comment that I think as we go on and things get tight and tough, and people really want to look and understand where their money's being spent, I appreciate that, and hopefully other people will give us more clarity on that.
You know, I understand that the board is under extreme pressure right now.
Yeah.
And we will ensure that all details are included.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have item 26, which is a report on approving expenditure plan for probation agency juvenile justice. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Robinson, Mark Ferella, Chief Probation Officer, here before you today to ask that you approve the expenditure plan for JJCPA for fiscal year 10, 11. In the latter part of May, I was before you when we were having the meeting in Oxnard and explained and got your approval for an application for substantial modifications to our JJCPA program. At that time, I explained that we were removing three of our funded programs out from underneath the JJCPA umbrella, and then bringing two in. Two of the three were eliminated, and one, our Enhanced Institution Services, we moved it out under a different funding source. So now I'm back before you with detail of that expenditure plan, and here to answer any questions.
Okay. Other questions? No questions?
I just got a comment. I'm just hearing great things out of your agency. I just want to, I just heard some yesterday, I just want to say congratulations to all these, you're doing a great job.
Great to hear.
No, it's good to hear that stuff.
It just is. You just have to keep it that way.
I like to show that to you, now, is over at the JJC, and you're honoring your employees, you know, so I think you're doing a good job, you know. And that's important to honor the, and to recognize the employees, so keep doing a good job.
Yeah, and that particular event was the annual awards that are given by the Juvenile Justice Delinquency Prevention Commission, and that honors a lot of different professionals in juvenile justice.
And the volunteers, I think.
And volunteers, and not just those in, for the probation agency. There's a lot of good people out there doing some great things, so it's a great event to recognize those efforts.
Yeah, I'm hearing, too, is just, your agency is just open to new ideas and new ways of looking at things, and just, it's just great to hear that. A lot of times, we get rooted in things, and we just, you know, kind of get in a rut, and a rut is like a grave with two open ends, you know? I mean, it's, but this is great. I've just been hearing great things, so I just had to say that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I appreciate the work of the JJCC, whether it is coordinated work, and talking about the interconnected systems that must work together. And pleased to see that we were able to have some funds to increase for both the district attorney and the public defender. So, and that takes cooperation and collaboration, so appreciate your leadership on it.
The expansion of Thrive and Recovery Classroom really was an effort, and we put together these Education Juvenile Justice summits. And there was a big push among all of our partners that we really had to look at establishing school-based resources. So rather than having schools and juvenile justice working separately, the push was to bring juvenile justice service onto school campuses and really help schools target those kids that are at the highest risk to enter into the system, or those kids who are in the system that were trying to transition back. So I think it was just a great collaboration, and the JJCC felt that that was the direction we wanted to go. So we're hoping good things.
Good work. Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the recommended action. Please vote. And that's approved unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, board members, next up, we have item 27, and Supervisor Parks.
If the board will agree, I'd like to recommend the appointment of Supervisor Long to the CSAC Board.
Can we have a week to study this?
Yeah. I mean, can you, we've got to find somebody that's interested in this stuff, that takes it serious.
Just another opportunity for us to compliment Supervisor Long for continuing to serve at this...
And good job.
...straight level for us.
And give our appreciation for all the extra time and travel.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve that policy matter. Please vote. I appreciate your support. Thank you, and I'll continue. Thank you, and I'll continue to serve. Next up, we have our correspondence agenda, 28 and 29.
We'll approve them.
Motion to approve in a second.
And that is approved.
Okay, now we have time because our time certain calendar does not begin until 10 o'clock. So do we have time for some closed session items? We do? Can we handle some things and, you know? Okay. You got people ready to come in? No? But we'll get them down here. Okay. Do what? We're going to go on to closed session, and we'll be back out for our time certain at 10 o'clock. And open session, and our first, item 15, 10 o'clock time certain, is a report on the proposed ordinance amendments to the Ventura County Building Code. And good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Long, Ms. Robinson. My name is, and members of the board, my name is Jim McDonald. I'm the county building official, and I'm here today to present for your consideration the adoption of the 2010 California Building Code. With me, I have representatives from the Public Works Department as well as the Environmental Health Division of RMA that are available to answer any questions related to their area of responsibility within the building codes. Copies of all of the draft building code were sent out to interested parties, Institute of Architects, Structural Engineers Association, the Building Industry Association, and also since September 13th, a copy of the draft has also been on our website and available for review. We've also sent a copy to every member of our Boards of Appeals. We did receive one communication from a writer, Art Ludwig, and he had expressed some concern with limitations on building height for limited density dwellings. I responded back to that comment, and he was satisfied with that. He did have some other concerns where he was interested in trying to bring some provisions into the code that would have, I think, taken us to a little bit more of a discretionary process as opposed to fixed objective ministerial building standards. So those were not included. So with that, I'm going to proceed real quick with the PowerPoint and just give you a quick update. What this package does is it updates all the model codes that are part of Title 24 that we adopt. There's a new code that's being adopted this year, one of two. The first one is the International Residential Code. It was adopted by the state and is now part of Title 24. It's part 2.5. The second new code that's been included is the California Green Building Standards Code. That is part 11 of Title 24. Additionally, we have added civil administrative penalties to the building code, which were not there previously. That's been included in section 114.5. We have put in straw bale provisions. We've had several requests from applicants to use straw bale for building material, and in reviewing it, subject to some changes to what's provided to the state, we can find no reason to not allow it. So I think it's a, it's a, that's a good thing. The other thing that we've added is alternate provisions for limited density dwellings. Limited density dwellings, very briefly, is a provision in state regulation that allows your board to make a finding that certain areas would be considered rural and therefore would qualify for the construction of a limited density dwelling. Limited density dwellings are intended to be built by the owner and occupied by the owner. They do not have a reduction in building standards, but they do have some alternate provisions relative to electrical and some of the materials that can be used for construction. Gives the building official a little bit more authority in dealing with alternate materials specifically for these types of buildings.
What do you mean by occupied by the owner?
Well, what the intent of this regulation is, is that if an owner on a parcel that qualifies for a limited density dwelling builds that, they have to reside in it for a certain period of time. We have three years in the ordinance. I understand that if they, you know, if they go into bankruptcy or something happens, that's virtually beyond our control. But the intent is, is that the requirement of the permit that the owner occupy this is part of what's recorded to the deed. So it's not intended for a person to buy property, build a limited density dwelling, and then sell it to someone else. The intent is, if you're going to build a limited density dwelling, you must also reside in it. Creates a certain interest where the owner has more interest in ensuring that it's built very well. Okay?
Jim, on the straw bale, is that an amendment to the material, or what is that?
For the straw bale? Actually, the straw bale is provided, straw bale provisions are provided for in the Health and Safety Code. It requires that your board adopt those provisions in order to use them locally, but the straw bale provisions are prescriptively provided in section 18009, I believe it is, of the Health and Safety Code, and allows us to adopt and then use straw bale. Now, we are not proposing to use straw bale for the full construction features of a building as is common up and down the state in those jurisdictions that have adopted straw bale. We're limiting straw bale to use of an infill only. So in other words, a building would have to be built with post and beam construction, and all the vertical and all the lateral seismic and wind loads would have to be carried by the framing system, and then you can infill with straw bale.
But we have to have it there regardless if we use it or not? It's got to be part of that chapter?
Well, no, no, we're not required to use straw bale at all.
No, but we can, need to have it in the, in the code?
Oh, yeah. If we're going to adopt it, it would need to be in this code. I suppose it could be a separate ordinance, but the best place for it is within the building code because that's where the regulation would come from.
While you're on that topic, how do the other counties get away with it in terms of structural stability if they're using? You're saying other counties are using straw bale and actually using it for structural support?
No, I'm not aware of any, and everything that I've seen, they're all using the straw bale.
So the advantage of us adopting it here is now people can actually see in our code that we have straw bale whereas before.
We didn't.
Yeah, you really had to know.
Before you were allowed to do it, but you couldn't find it.
Right, exactly. And you had to know the Health and Safety Code in order to know that it was there.
Right.
Now it's going to be a little more front and center as part of our code.
Okay.
And they're beautiful homes, too, by the way. They truly are.
While I have you interrupted, can I ask, or, well, maybe you're going to go on.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, too, since we've interrupted.
Sure. Got something started.
Regarding, we have something coming before us in a few weeks, I imagine, regarding an alternative material for bridges. Would that be something that would be helpful to have in this code?
Well, the alternate material for bridges, the code already provides for alternate materials. And the, what it requires is that the building official make a finding that the alternate materials are equivalent to what would be considered for steel or for wood, materials that we're familiar with and the industry is familiar with. What happens in the construction industry is as materials move forward and are designed, the manufacturing process, that generally always moves faster than the codes can keep up. So the code does have provisions that allows us to make findings for alternate materials. And bridges, for example, in one case, if this is the one that I'm thinking of, they are using a material that's actually been tested and used in the military for quite some time. I believe we've already approved that one as well.
Right. And so I was just wondering if, instead of having to go through that process, eventually you want to just kind of codify these, put them into the code?
Yeah, the alternate material provisions are intended to be on a case-by-case basis. They're not intended to be something that would just be put in the code so that it could be repeatedly done. If that was to happen, that really needs to be done at the state level and then make its way down and be equivalent across all the jurisdictions in the state. But we entertain alternate provisions often because sometimes the provisions in the code themselves simply will not work because a, somebody has a unique circumstance, a unique material, and we try to accommodate that as much as we can, as long as we can find the safety requirements.
And it sounds like that particular one is one that is easy to approve if the military is using it and meets all these standards.
Yeah.
The other question I have is, I need a little bit more information on the limited residential.
Okay.
What is it?
What a limited density dwelling is, is it's a building that is constructed by the owner on a parcel. In this case here, we've defined a 100 acre or greater parcel in areas that have no sphere of influence from a city, and they have no off-site services, no water, no off-site sewer treatment. They're basically entirely rural parcels. And what it allows is, it allows the owner to use various materials in order to build a building. And the finding requirement for the building, for a limited density dwelling, is that the building be structurally sound. We have limitations that are proposed in here of a maximum of 12 feet high and 1,000 square feet. This is something that's also done in several other counties up and down the state. This is a provision that comes out of the, out of the regulations for the Housing and Community Development Department. Let's see, Nevada County, Butte County, Humboldt, Mendocino, Sonoma, quite a few other counties also have these provisions. However, my experience in talking with the building officials at those counties, not all of them, primarily Humboldt, Mendocino, is that when they first went with these provisions, they didn't have them very well regulated or very tight, and they quickly got out of control. You end up with people building 5,000 square foot houses, you know, with, without any real regulation.
It's limited to 1,000 square foot maximum. Does the second dwelling unit apply to that? Where once you have a residential, you have to allow for the second dwelling unit?
It could if the parcel would meet the rural definition. Yeah, you could use that. And additions to it, to an existing building, you could use it, and it also would apply to pertinent structures. And it also would apply to pertinent structures. Yeah, so if you want to build a garage.
In which case the second dwelling unit would be bigger than the primary dwelling unit?
Well, it's a maximum of 1,000. Yeah. It's just a maximum of 1,000 square feet. Okay. Okay. So the, there we go. So also, the previous provisions that we've had for relocated buildings and structures has been carried forward and we moved it into Chapter 42. Provisions for swimming pools have also been moved forward and they're now in Chapter 43. Mobile homes, commercial coaches, we've kept all of those same provisions as before, carried those forward to Chapter 44, replacing what was previously Chapter 44 in the 2007 code, which was the incentives for green building. The provisions for green building are now mandatory under the state regulations going to affect January 1st for all new buildings and therefore the incentive was not really required for that at this time. And then also our provisions for post-disaster reconstruction have been carried forward and they're relocated into Chapter 45.
Can I ask you a question, Jim? Did the incentives work? Did we have anybody take advantage of it?
Yeah, we did. We had some. One of the things that really, I think, went against us was that the market had slowed down so much that we were already turning our plan check around fast enough where it was not worth it for applicants to even pursue an expedited plan check because we were already so quick.
But did it have some positive impact?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I think altogether we had, I believe, I don't have an exact amount, I would say 12 applicants.
And if the market would have stayed hot, you'd think it would have been more?
I think, oh, yeah. Because when people are trying to get their permits, they want to do what they need to do in order to get their plans approved. Ag buildings and our provisions for streamlined permits are still in the building code. We've carried those forward as well. Provisions for grading are again in Appendix J and they're carried forward substantially as they previously were in the 2007 code with some minor amendments. Provisions for onsite wastewater disposal systems is also carried forward. There are some changes relative to determining when the public sewer may be available and the Environmental Health Division is here to answer any questions specific with that.
I do have, what is the new distance now?
I'm sorry?
What is the new distance now?
I believe it's, well, it's the way that it's measured, I believe, Bob. I think it's 200 feet from the property line as opposed to 200 feet from the structure. Is that accurate?
For the record, Robert Gallagher with the Environmental Health Division. It's my understanding that in the new state code, they took away the distance provisions that were in the prior code. And so what we're doing is just putting a distance into our code now so that it's clear for people who want to build in the future that we'll be establishing an actual number. The new code just uses it up to our discretion to determine when the sewer is available or not. So it's uncomfortable with that.
So if you're, if it's less than 200 feet from your property line to the sewer plant, you can't have an onsite wastewater disposal system?
If the sewer is within a connection, is available within 200 feet of the property line, we're defining that as being available and requiring the connection to the sewer.
And not allowing the onsite wastewater? And not allowing the onsite wastewater?
Not allowing the septic system.
Okay, not allowing the septic system.
But Jim, Jim, the whole idea of the onsite is just to get rid of the septic tanks, right?
Well, the onsite wastewater disposal system, in Al Rio's case, exactly. You have to get rid of the septic.
I know in Malibu, there was a whole complex that went into the onsite wastewater disposal system because of the septic tank concerns that they had. I think it was in the, in the county lane, the Malibu.
Yeah, on a lease up there, I believe.
But that's to replace the septic tank, hopefully.
I'm not familiar with that one, John.
Yeah, but I know we did it through VRSD and onsite.
Oh, of Malibu Bay Club?
Yeah.
Is that what you're thinking? Yeah, I mean, that's, really, there's no public sewer available to that project and that's, they've got their own treatment plant there.
And I think the supervisor's asking, how far away do we have to be from a sewer system to have one of those onsite systems? Is it 200 feet, is it 500 feet from a sewer line or?
I mean, basically, the, that distance to the property line is, we're carrying forward what we currently enforce. The only thing that we're tweaking a little bit from the old code is that it had a provision that it was either 200 feet from the property line or 200 feet from a structure that was going to be connected to the sewer. And we had some difficulties enforcing that because, I mean, identical people could move their house like an inch or two to avoid connecting to the sewer. And with all the potential water quality impacts with septic system discharges that are now pretty well-known, we wanted to encourage people to connect to the sewer when it's available. So basically, we're saying, if you're within 200 feet of the property line, you really should connect to that sewer. And then there's administrative provisions in the code that would allow us to give variances to that. For example, if you had a 60-acre parcel and you really wanted to build in the back part of that property and connect the sewer would be extremely expensive, that we could grant an exception to the connection requirement. But essentially, what we're trying to do here is maintain the 200-foot requirement that's in effect now and just make it more consistent that no matter where you put your house, generally speaking, if the sewer's available within 200 feet, we want you to connect.
Okay. I appreciate you trying to give clarity to it too because a lot of this stuff doesn't always have clarity, so thank you for that. But what happens if you're in a situation where it's 200 feet, but I have to, the sewer's behind somebody else's property and I have to go through their property to bring it over? You don't have to go through easements and all that sometimes?
Well, again, those would be complicating features that would allow us to say you don't have to connect. I mean, basically, the sewer's got to be in the street, it's got to be in the right-of-way so that the connection's readily available. We're not really thinking that we're going to make people do things like, you know, have to install big lift pumps to get it over the hill or deal with easements and stuff. If they can't get them, you know, then we still want to allow them to be able to build if they can meet the minimum requirements for the onsite system. So that's still, you know, an issue too that they're going to have to deal with.
Okay. To close up on this, really quickly, I'll go over some of the remaining items. We've also increased the permit exemptions for readily removable hoop structures. Changes in the ag industry apparently have increased the need for these portable structures to be higher. Our current code only allows them to be eight feet. And these things are, as long as they have no foundation, they don't sit on a concrete floor and don't become used for something other than the growing of plants, which is what they're intended for, up to 12 feet high. They can be removed, they're taken from place to place from time to time. So we've increased that. Also, we've, one of the good things is, this last code cycle, I was on the State Fire Marshal's Committee for writing the next version of the high fire hazard area requirements. And one of the things that we were able to do is eliminate a lot of our local amendments for the fire hazard construction requirements because the state, we really got a lot of that stuff cleaned up. So we got rid of quite a few there. We also added language to define and strengthen construction on hillside buildings. We're also adding one additional provision related to floodplain construction, which is in the package that I've given to Roberta. We're adding that this morning and it is to carry forward and continue a current requirement in the floodplain requirements that a building being constructed within a floodplain, that it has to be elevated to one foot above the designed flood elevation. That's a provision that the county has used for a number of years now. I don't know, maybe back to 1985. And a lot of floodplain construction matters are now making their way into the building codes nationally because the model codes that are adopted in California are national codes. And so we have a lot of floodplain provisions already in the building code now. This is one feature that's not specifically in the building code and so we wanted to make sure that we added that so that we have the ability within the confines of the building code itself to specify the minimum floor height for buildings constructed in the floodplain. And it's expected also that that may help the county's efforts to apply for the CRS as well.
Before you go on, I just wanted to ask, when you say added language to find and strengthen building, construction hillsides, what do you mean by that?
Well, what it is, I didn't, I didn't want to get too complicated. Basically, if you're going to build a building on a hillside with a slope of three to one or greater, what we're doing is, similar to Los Angeles, is we're requiring that they define what's called the base level diaphragm. And that's going to be the diaphragm, the floor diaphragm, the lowest in the building so that it will transfer downhill loads from the soil during a seismic event through the diaphragm to the side retaining walls. And basically, it requires the retaining walls along the side of the building to go up higher so that you can carry these loads forward. They found after the Northridge earthquake that there were some problems with buildings that were not constructed with good base level diaphragm, carrying these loads out to the side walls and buildings had moved significantly down the hill.
Right. Okay. So we're not saying we can't do it, we're just saying we have to build them safer.
Oh, yeah, that's all, yeah, exactly. You've just got to make some changes in the design. And then on the straw bales, real quick, the buildings can be used for non-bearing conditions only, so we still have to have post-and-beam construction. We do require engineering for any straw bale building, so if somebody wants to use it, they have to come up with a design. And we're also limiting them to one-story in height. We're not limiting them to their occupancy group, but we are limiting them in their height. And there's no limit on the area as well, although I think in practical application, we're not going to have people wanting to build 25,000-square-foot straw bale buildings. And then to finish up, limited-density owner-built dwellings, I've gone over that briefly. Obviously, see, these are pictures of some straw bale stuff. The buildings have to be outside the sphere of influence of a city, no off-site services on parcels greater than 100 acres, and they must be owner-built and owner-occupied.
Can I ask some more questions about this one? It states that in the report that you have to adopt these express findings.
Right.
But we are under no mandated requirement to actually include this into the code or into our ordinances.
No, it's if we choose to. If the board, your board chooses to adopt these provisions, you can do that. You can choose not to as well, I would imagine.
And a couple of other questions I have on this. One, has it been vetted through our planning department?
These provisions, no, they've not. They're just fixed objective ministerial standards. They don't, they're still subject to all of the planning development rules. Zoning is still applicable in all of its features.
Well, it's almost kind of amending zoning in a sense because it's saying in this zone we can have these buildings. So I'm wondering if it also has gone, if this isn't a SEQA issue because you're allowing for a development of a structure that previously we hadn't as well as, as you said earlier, allowing for the second dwelling unit to become attached to it. It just raises some questions to me about using this mechanism to allow for new kinds of structures in rural development.
I think Chris has got a, excuse me if I might try and answer that. The zoning requirements will remain unchanged in these areas and, by the way, we've defined it, they're virtually all open space areas, though these are not additional structures that will be allowed. They're simply related to the construction methods used for those structures. So if the zoning ordinance allows one dwelling unit and a second dwelling unit in that area, those same requirements remain, it's just that they have an opportunity to use an alternative construction perhaps for those. Doesn't grant them any additional density or any additional rights to construct structures. Same zoning requirements.
I didn't know it was related to the type of construction, but rather the size. We're now allowing a new size, isn't that right?
Actually, this is a restriction on the size that is, it's more restrictive than the zoning ordinance would allow. And that is primarily, and Jim can speak to this better, but because of the often, you might say, cutting-edge or experimental nature of the construction, the idea was to keep those structures smaller to limit the potential for a problem, but.
And I would see them as two completely different things. We're doing one that talks about straw bales and another one talking about these, what do you call them?
Limited-density dwellings.
Limited-density dwellings. Like they have nothing to do with what the material is that's building them, but rather allowing them in rural lands at a certain size.
No, it's really geared toward the materials that are used in both cases. Limited-density dwellings, if you're a property owner on a 100-acre parcel and you want to do a limited-density dwelling, you can use any material that will provide for a sound structural condition. It doesn't allow you to build an additional dwelling. It doesn't allow you to build a larger dwelling that you would have been allowed under the zoning ordinance. The process of approving this is just simply related to the building standards, the ministerial requirements of the construction codes. It has nothing to do with anything beyond just the materials that you can use.
And without doing this, what is allowed?
Oh, regular conventional construction is allowed?
Sure. I could look if I have to. No, I can do it.
Yeah. I guess it just looks to me that it allows for structures and second dwelling units where, I don't know if that was previously allowed for without making this amendment.
No, you can still have second dwellings.
I want to try my hand at this, ask these questions and see if I, so it's not going to change the number of units that can be built on that lot in any way. It's just going to allow non-traditional building materials to be used if you meet the requirements of keeping it down to 1,000 square feet.
That's correct.
Right?
Yeah.
So, okay, all right. So in other words, if you say, hey, I want to do a small structure, I want to do non-traditional building material, as long as you keep it within 1,000 square feet and meet the other requirements, you can do it, but it counts as your unit.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes. Okay. And I think that with that, I've only got a couple of other things. I don't want to take up too much time. Basically, the, for the California Residential Code, the CRC, it allows, it changes the requirements for design and construction of dwellings that meet certain requirements. If you want to build a house on a level lot less than two stories in height, if you want to build it prescriptively according to the requirements to California Residential Code, you can do it without an engineering design. It does limit your features of what you would like if people, if they like offsets and vertical irregularities and unique roof shapes, that's not going to work. They'll have to build according to the building code. But this does allow prescriptively constructed dwellings and when you get into the California Residential Code, it's prescriptively spells everything out, your foundation, your framing, your roofing, everything as to how it has to be done. So, and then on the California Green Building Code, I wanted to get into that very briefly. In 2007, the governor directed the Building Standards Commission to work with state agencies and write this California Green Building Code and make it part of the 2010 California Building Code cycle, which we're in now. The California Green Code is the first in the nation to have a statewide green building code that is mandatory beginning January 1st, 2011. This California Green Building Code, interestingly enough, actually had the reverse effect nationally in that the International Code Council that writes all the model codes that we adopt is using the California Green Building Code as their basis for another national green building code. And so nationally, they're working on the International Green Construction Code, which is started from the California Code. They worked on the CalGreen Code, working with building officials, industry groups, architects, Building Industry Association and other interested parties. And the development of the next cycle of the California Green Building Code for 2014 is already underway. The highlights for the, some of the requirements of the Green Building Code, it requires building commissioning for any commercial building over 10,000 square feet beginning in July of 2011, requires mandatory 20% reduction in indoor water use in all buildings, residential and non-residential. It phases in over two years mandatory reductions of formaldehyde limits for building materials and it also sets VOC content in building materials, sets limits on those, the finishes and so forth. It also requires that an operation and maintenance manual be provided for buildings, whether it's on a CD or paper or website or something that builders, that's really geared, I think, mainly to tracks, but it requires that you have a maintenance manual for all of the features of your dwelling. And it also mandates stormwater controls for sites less than one acre. And with that, I will be available, I did want to mention something, questions have been asked about the cost of the California Green Building Code. And a question was posed to Housing and Community Development, who put this together. And for construction along the coast, it's expected that the mandatory provisions are going to cost roughly $300 to $400 per typical 2,000-square-foot dwelling, roughly, to implement those mandatory features in the coast. In the non-coastal areas where it's quite a bit warmer- In the non-coastal areas, where it's quite a bit warmer, it's roughly $400 to $600. And then these provisions also have, the Green Building Code has Tier 1 and Tier 2 provisions in it. The Tier 1 provision is generally 15% greater in sustainability and energy efficiency than the mandatory features. And then Tier 2 is an additional 15% above Tier 1, and it has a lot more mandatory features than that would be required if that were in place. Tier 1 along the coast would roughly cost about 1,200, Tier 2 would roughly cost about 2,500 along the coast. Non-coastal areas, 1,800 for Tier 1, and about $3,000 per dwelling for inland, for Tier 1, or Tier 2, I'm sorry. In Ventura County, other than Simi Valley, no city or county is proposing to, including, I'm sorry, Santa Barbara County, is proposing to adopt anything other than the mandatory provisions as they rest in the building code today. And as we've talked about that with a lot of the other building officials, there's consensus that this is a new code, we've never enforced it before, and, and it's one of those things we have to get our mind around as we go forward and do it right, starting at that point. Also, I think it's important to note, too, as with the Energy Code, as code development goes forward, every cycle, right now, we have our mandatory features, we have Tier 1, Tier 2. In three years, what is Tier 2 will become Tier 1, what is currently Tier 1 will become mandatory, and they will move forward in these, as a part of the, of the statewide effort to reduce, to get to net zero energy buildings, they're really trying to tighten down on the green building features in conjunction with the energy requirements. So over a six-year period, what would be Tier 2 today, a 30% increase will then be, is expected to be mandatory. So, and with that, I'll, I'll be available for any questions.
Supervisor Bennett first.
Yeah, thank you. My, my questions are specific to what you're talking about here. Because we used to have an incentive program for people to do the green building, and the incentive program, now you're saying we're eliminating it because what the state has done is made that, made that mandatory.
Yes.
What is your opinion, what I'm interested in is, why don't we keep our incentive program for Tier 1 and Tier 2?
Okay.
In other words, we simply move it up. We had an, we had an incentive program for here, the state now makes this mandatory, so we keep our incentive program. Do you see any problems with us in terms of implementation of that?
No, you're, you're thinking of incentives along the line of offering expedited plan check again and move forward the way we had in the past. I, I don't see any problem with that at all.
And you said it had some effect, and maybe if we get building to pick back up again, it could, could just incentivize people. Now, those incentives will go away eventually when, you know, in the next three years for Tier 1 and then.
Well, but, but this provision could continue in three years, because if the, if the code stays the way it is, Tier 1 and Tier 2 will by definition not change, but the requirements will advance as time goes forward.
Sure.
So, yeah, but we could do that.
So, anyway, board members, just want to let you know when it comes time to make the motion, instead of eliminating the incentives that we had for green building, that we would keep them for people who want to voluntarily go to the next level, unless you're seeing, that's, I'll be proposing that as part of it.
What were the incentives?
Expedited processing. Go ahead.
Yeah, we, we charge an expedited, let's say, for example, you've got a project and you really want to get it approved quickly, we have an expedited plan check fee. Typically, if our turnaround time is 15 to 20 days, we, with the expedited plan check, we guarantee that we'll turn your first turnaround in 10 days. And what we charge a 35% surcharge to cover the additional cost of staff overtime in order to accommodate that.
And so under this, if you go to this Tier 1 or 2, we'll waive that 30%?
We'll waive the 30%, but we'll still expedite it, yeah. I, I don't think that's a, a significant impact on us, especially right now, as work goes forward, it may. I would expect then that provisions that we had in the last ordinance, that if, you know, we can't allow ourselves to go over 30 days on our first plan check, if we do that, then we start running in, up against our requirement to respond to the applications, so.
And my other question, Jim, is the whole gray water, you know, program that you've worked really hard on in terms of moving forward, any of that affected by these standards?
No, it's not affected, those provisions stay as they previously had, are in place.
Good, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, Jim, all I wanted to ask was, this is a mandated three-year update.
Yes.
We have to.
Yes.
Absolutely do.
Yeah, well, I should say, it, it's, the codes are updated every three years. If the county chooses not to go through the adoption process, what was adopted by the State Building Standards Commission just goes into effect without our being.
If we don't add to it, or whatever, we automatically, that becomes
Yeah, exactly.
part of the, the building code.
And we can't be less restrictive than what the state standards are, we can only be more restrictive. You'll see in your board package that the, the items where we have the legislative, there's a finding for each item, we have to make that finding in order to, in order to make our code more restrictive.
It's our, to our benefit to go ahead and update them, you know, and.
Oh, I believe so, you bet. We have unique local conditions that we try to deal with in these codes.
Thank you.
Board members, this is a public hearing, and we have public requests to speak. Thank you, and we'll move ahead with that, and then get back to any other comments before the board action, and I'd invite Lisa Woodburn up to speak to this item.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Woodburn, I work for Jensen Design and Survey, located at 1672 Donlin Street in Ventura, and I'm here today to support staff's recommended changes to the plumbing code. I represent some agricultural business owners who have offices in Oxnard Plain, and many of them have been there for 30 to 40 years. When it's time to renew their conditional use permit, they find themselves faced with a real dilemma. Even though they have traditional septic systems that are in good working order, because of the Regional Water Quality Control Board standards that have been adopted recently, they find that they cannot meet those standards with their traditional system, and they would have to replace that traditional system with a mound system. There have been some technological advances in industry that allow for alternatives other than a traditional mound system that would meet the Regional Water Quality Control Board standards. These alternative systems have been approved for use in Santa Barbara, Los Angeles, and San Diego counties, but up until now, the Ventura County Environmental Health Department has not been able to approve anything other than a mound or a sand filtration system because of limited definitions in the building code. These much-needed revisions to the plumbing code are a fine example of county staff working with local property owners to develop a win-win strategy for everyone. A win-win for the county and the Regional Water Board, because they will get a cleaner effluent by allowing these alternative systems. And it's a win for property owners because it allows them to stay in the location they are in without having to put in a mound system. And a lot of times, they can't put in a mound system, they don't have the, the room, they don't have the, the area to put in the large mound system that would be required. So I want to thank staff for their work on these revisions, and I ask that you support this change to the plumbing code. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Lynn Jensen.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Jensen, and there's a new organization in town, it's called VC Colab. We just started it, it's the Coalition of Labor, Agriculture, and Business. I wanted to introduce the organization. The purpose is to promote economic vitality in Ventura County and to represent business interests in the legislative process. We seek to provide a balance to the environmental lobby who have been in control of the dialogue, we believe, through the media, and we want to challenge the data that's been calculated and the scientific studies they've used to control the dialogue. We're seeing some of the things come out of the California Air Resources Board, and some of their data is being questioned now across the state. What we want to do is provide business expertise from our members to work with the county staff to craft reasonable rules that do not force all the businesses in the county to become violators and to allow them to make a profit. In July, the founders of our organization lobbied to become a part of the process in the vision, revision of the agricultural grading ordinance, which you know about, through a stakeholder meeting, which will lead to the replacement of Appendix J, which is part of the building code that's being adopted today. And I guess I was questioning why Appendix J was part of the code being adopted, because it's currently under revision, and I was, it was explained to me by Jim McDonald that it has to be adopted in its form today, and, and that the process is going to be ongoing. This process includes a volunteer group of respective agricultural business owners, including growers, cattlemen, landowners, engineers, et cetera, who will all have to live with these rules that we are coming up for the grading ordinance. They're working with the public works staff, which we very much appreciate their patience of Phil Nelson, thank you so much, and to, and they're going to come up with grading standards and thresholds for permits. And I guess I'm here today just to recommend that they give, that you give this new process your support, and really make it a model for how business and government can work together to make reasonable legislation. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, no further public speaking request, so bring it back to the board if there are any further questions of staff.
If I could just ask, Jim, where in this, when you go through all the detail, did we really add and be more restrictive than the state? Is there some major ones?
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Where are we more restrictive than just the state standards that, I mean, there may be a couple of them, but where are the major issues?
Well, I think that, really, I think the, one of the bigger things is the, is the seismic design requirements for hillside structures. That's really, that one has, along with that, that one has, I think, the biggest potential impact, because it does require that the construction features for those types of buildings, you have to have a much stiffer vertical wall, instead of stepping down your wood framing down near grade, you're going to have to build your masonry or concrete wall up higher in order to support that diaphragm. So there's additional cost.
Right, right.
That's really probably the most significant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I've built some of those homes, and that does get expensive to do that.
Yeah, you bet. We did make one provision out.
Yeah.
I will say that LA had recommended, and they, they wanted a, a, they're putting in a, for the ledger, on the backside of the wall, they wanted to use a, a steel ledger that is, what's it, is it like a zinc coated, protective coated steel ledger? The cost of that apparently is very significant. We removed that out, because if the building is built right, that shouldn't be a problem. In other words, it shouldn't be close enough to the soil to be impacted by the erosion that would take place on the, on the beam.
Okay, great, thanks, Jim.
Okay, any other questions? Yes?
I'm ready, I'm not, I don't have a question, I'm ready to make a motion if we're ready. Just, just so everybody understands the motion, Article 4, Chapter 44 is the part of the provision that applies to the incentives for the green building. So I'd like to approve the recommended action with a modification to retain Article 4, Chapter 44, as revised to apply to the green building incentives to Tier 1 or Tier 2 structures under the California Green Building Code. The other thing I might mention just in speaking to this is that this does move us forward in terms of green building standards and higher standards, and that we do it statewide, which I think everybody appreciates, it's much better for the industry to, to have that happen statewide. But an ancillary thing, that's one that we've dealt with some, is that you no longer now need to go get, pay somebody, some private people to come inspect your property, give you a LEED certification. And that's always been a little bit of a conflict of interest, see, people created these standards, and then you had to pay somebody to say you're a LEED certified building, and what we've done is we've used the standards, but didn't get the certification, and just said, these are, these are built to that. Now, everybody will be able to say they're at the initial LEED standards, because they're building the California standard, so I think that's an ancillary benefit of this. But that's my motion.
There's a motion? And a second?
I would also note that this will help to reduce energy use, and it'll reduce the amount of money in the long term, while we're talking about how in the short term the costs are going to be, in the long term, they will be less. That's so positive.
Yeah, no, no question that the whole purpose here is to have, I mean, we've got to get moving, you know, further down the road on the green energy use.
Okay, please vote.
Jim, thanks for making that understandable.
Yeah. That passes unanimously. Thank you for, I know, extensive work on that, appreciate that we've been able to bring it forward, and I agree in having the statewide uniformity is important in both the goals for green energy and, and alternative resources. Thank you, appreciate the work.
Hi, to the ordinance. An ordinance for the County of Ventura, amending the Ventura County Building Code and adopting by reference the current editions of certain state and model codes as follows. California Building Code 2010 Edition, California Residential Code 2010 Edition, California Green Building Standards Code 2010 Edition, Uniform Housing Code 1997 Edition, Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings 1997 Edition, California Electric Code 2010 Edition, California Plumbing Code 2010 Edition, the California Mechanical Code 2010 Edition, and Appendix A1 of the California Existing Building Code 2010 Edition, together with the amendments there, too.
Could you repeat that?
Okay, and thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, and thank you, board members, for, we went over on this one, so, did you feel it?
Well, we didn't get, we didn't get the codes adopted before 10/21.
At 10/21, did you feel it? It's my pleasure to bring in this Great California Shakeout Resolution that does recognize that 10/21, on October 21st, there will be a Great Statewide California Shakeout, and it really is to bring attention, and I, I certainly invite Laura up to, up to the podium to talk to this, I'm going to read some contents of this resolution, as we, and I know that Paul Grossgold is also here to speak to preparations for our earthquake drill for the Great Shakeout and the participation county-wide. It is an opportunity for the community that, here in Ventura, Ventura County, where we, we experience many natural hazards and disasters, and, and we, we, we work hard to engage the public to be prepared and to always think about what they should be doing both in their home and their neighborhood and their community, whether it's earthquake, wildfire, floods, winter storms, droughts, heat waves, dam failures, to recognize the importance of being able to withstand the natural hazards, as well as the importance of reducing the human suffering, property damage, interruption of public services, and economic losses caused by those hazards. Major earthquakes certainly pose a particularly significant and ongoing threat to the Ventura County region, as they do statewide. Ventura County has a responsibility to promote the preparedness internally as well as with the public, and to plan appropriately for the earthquake-related disasters. The protection of our Ventura County employees will allow them to facilitate the continuity of government, so their experience and training will, will assist all of us in, in following up to a major earthquake event. The community resiliency to earthquakes and other disasters really depends on that preparedness and the levels of the stakeholders in the community who are, who are trained and organized and set forward and willing to, to help us respond. By supporting the Great California Shakeout, we can utilize the information on shakeout.org to educate the residents regarding actions to protect our life and property, mitigating structural and non-hazardous, non-structural hazards, and participating in the drills. So it will take place on October 21st, the Great California Shakeout, at 10/21. Did you feel it? And strengthening the community and regional resiliency to an earthquake event. And of course, it still is the method to participate in this Great Shakeout to drop, cover, and hold on during the earthquake drill. So on the 21st, which is just around the corner, there will be a full exercise, and now I'm going to step down and present this, and Laura Hernandez of our OES will talk about the Shakeout Drill, Mr. Grossgold of GSA will talk about preparations for the Shakeout Drill here on the campus, and we'll proceed with the Great Shakeout.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Laura Hernandez, Assistant Director for the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services, thank you so much for carrying this proclamation for us. Good morning, Ms. Robinson, members of the board. We are here this morning to invite all board members and the county residents to join us in participating in this year's Great California Shakeout. As Supervisor Long mentioned, at 10/21, on October 21st, millions of Californians will drop, cover, and hold on the Great California Shakeout. This drill is being organized to inspire Californians to get ready for earthquakes and to prevent disasters from becoming catastrophes. Shakeout is an opportunity for California residents to learn what to do before, during, and after a major earthquake. Just yesterday, the Los Angeles Times article, posted an article warning residents that the predicted rupture along the San Andreas Fault could be longer and stronger than what we are likely, and that we are likely to experience an 8.1 earthquake along that fault system. and that we are likely to experience an 8.1 earthquake along that fault system. Other reports from USGS and Caltech support the notion that we are well within the window of opportunity for a major earthquake along the San Andreas Fault. Also tomorrow, I will be attending a seminar on the Southern California Catastrophic Earthquake Response Plan. Many of our county representatives are helping in the formation of this plan, which will help direct government agencies on how to respond to system failures and damaged infrastructure following a catastrophic earthquake. As government leaders, while we continue to do our part to prepare for emergencies, it is important that residents understand the importance of personal responsibility and take the necessary measures to prepare themselves and their families. Currently, there are over 6.6 million registered participants in California, with over 118,000 residents from Ventura County who have pledged to participate in this drill. And I am proud to announce that we are ahead of San Luis Obispo County, who has a registration at 10,529, and Santa Barbara, we beat out Santa Barbara as well, their current registration is 81,180. So we are in the lead. To register for the drill, go to shakeout, www.shakeout.org, and participate in the drop, cover, and hold on Thursday, the 21st. And I especially want to thank you for your continued support of the county's emergency preparedness program. And with that, I'd like to invite Paul up to, he's done some great work this year with his staff in helping our county employees prepare.
Good morning. Paul Grossgold from General Services Agency. I'd like to report that we are going to leverage this year, the California Shakeout exercise, to exercise the county's program on earthquake preparedness and specifically for evacuation of our facilities after an earthquake. So the way the scenario would play out is we would drop, cover, and hold until the tremors, the last tremor is felt. Once there are no more tremors, we will evacuate the building. Now, to add some realism to this drill, we will actually be closing off several escape or evacuation routes, as might be expected to happen in a real earthquake. And we will have facilitators out to make sure that departments can make a decision on the spot about where to take their people as an alternate route. So we're really looking forward to this, we've never done quite this level before. Every year with this exercise, we've kind of stepped it up a little bit, and I hope to do more in the future. I just wanted to point out Rosalynn Harris and Patrick Squires in the back, who have done the real work on this, and so we're looking forward to that. A couple of points, as you know, all county employees are potentially emergency workers, and it says that on the back of our ID cards, except that some people who got their ID cards a long time ago don't actually have these. So we're standing ready to fix that for people, people like some of us, who might not have that. Did I miss anything, Roz?
No, awesome as always.
Just what I needed. So that's what we plan to do, it should be a great exercise, and we're looking forward to doing that. Can I answer any questions?
So Paul, no elevators from that day?
No elevators. As always with our evacuation drills, even with a fire drill, there would be no elevators, we would use the stairs for those events.
So this will be a real exercise, and I appreciate you stepping up to do that. Your team organized it, it's a lot of organizing, coordinating to do it.
And I might add that they coordinated this through the building committee, so the tenants are on board, they know this is happening. This will be at the Hall of Administration and pre-trial administration, I believe, right?
I just have one more comment. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Cynthia Elliott from our office, she's our Public Information Officer, and she's been spearheading this campaign with the cities and other organizations in the county, so I thank her for all her hard work.
Great registration, that's great. All right, let's take a quick photo shoot here.
One, two, and three, and one more, one, two, and three, and one more.
Okay, Board members, I'll stay down here to move on the next item that I'd like to introduce, and this is something that can shake your world also, and that is if someone says to you, if a physician says to you, you have breast cancer. And to bring forward this resolution that proclaims 2010 is a National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and it is my pleasure to do so, I invite up Jennifer Finerkey of Community Mission Manager, Monica Ward, Ramona Armijo, please come forward. If I missed someone, I'm sorry, come forward, we got them, okay. These folks are all very much active leaders in our community who've worked with many programs that really do outreach into the community to bring awareness to breast cancer. And this marks the 26th year that the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has been recognized, and it really is about educating women and men about early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment. Breast cancer impacts the lives of many Americans directly, either directly or through the diagnosis of a family member or a friend. There have been considerable progress in diagnosing this disease and improving treatments, and we know that it does make a difference. Yet eliminating breast cancer continues to be a major goal. While overall death rates are declining, breast cancer remains the second leading cause of cancer death among women. So through clinical breast exams, mammographies are the best way to detect breast cancer at an early stage. The American Cancer Society, the National Cancer Institute, the United States Preventive Services Task Force agree that regular mammograms can greatly reduce the risk of dying from breast cancer. October 15th is National Mammography Day, and women are encouraged to make their appointment around that date. This year, more than 22,545 California women, of which 535 reside in this county, will develop breast cancer. That's your statistics. So it's important to raise the awareness, it's important to advocate for early screening and detection, it's important to continue the programs that are so wonderfully done through American Cancer Society for relays, for Strides for Life, to improve and promote the advocacy in the public education that you can have prevention, early detection, and treatment, and survive breast cancer. Taking additional weight to reduce the risk of getting breast cancer means certainly having a healthy weight, exercising, lowering alcohol consumption, all those things that you should do anyway. So by recognizing this as the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we're encouraging all women and men of Ventura County to learn more about the disease, be proactive in early detection practices, participate in building awareness all year long. And there's been significant awareness this year, and I think every year it gets more and more so. There have been certainly full articles in papers, our Star carried an excellent supplement that was in the paper, and I know you're going to speak to that. And I had the pleasure of co-chairing with Ramona, the first five, and you all helped support it, the first 5K walk for the Strides for Life. And I thank those today who remembered to wear pink, and I do wear pink on, my stuff is really pink. I've got all the jewelry in the world, so jewelry, we like accessories. So recognizing this again, October, please comment. Help us to recognize this.
Madam Chairwoman, fellow Board members, Ms. Robinson, CEO, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Ramona Armijo, who has a PhD in Education and Knowledge Management. She received her master's degree in public health, and she is currently a professor at Ochsner College and a manager with Ventura County Behavioral Health. In 2003, Ramona was diagnosed with infiltrating enductal carcinoma breast cancer. Prior to her diagnosis, she was, because she was under the age of 40, medical personnel were reluctant to believe she had breast cancer when she initially found a lump. Because of her background and education, she became her own advocate and pushed for additional diagnostic tests and follow-up treatment. As a result, she ended up with the most excellent team of practitioners who, to this day, have developed a personal medical relationship with her to help her maintain her cancer-free status. Because of her experiences, she has become a volunteer with the American Cancer Society and an advocate for cancer patients, so they can also receive the best care and resources available.
Thank you, thank you, Jennifer. For decades, the American Cancer Society has advocated in Sacramento to help pass laws and establish the state's breast cancer screening and treatment programs. Because of these laws, insurance companies are required to provide coverage for mammograms, other screenings, breast reconstruction, and routine costs associated with treatment and clinical trials. This year, the American Cancer Society fought hard to reopen the doors to the Every Woman Counts Program. This program is very important because it provides screenings for uninsured and underinsured women throughout the state of California. The state closed the doors to new enrollees this year as a result of the state budget. Breast cancer screenings are currently on hold as a result. The American Cancer Society also fought at the federal level for increased funding for the National Breast Cancer Detection Program, and that program also provides funding to the Every Woman Counts Program.
And I'll just finish up with the American Cancer Society offers many cost-free patient service programs right here in this community, including transportation assistance for patients to and from their medical appointments. A Look Good, Feel Better Program, where trained volunteer cosmetologists teach women how to cope with skin changes and hair loss resulting from their treatment. We also have a Reach to Recovery Program, which matches a breast cancer survivor with a newly diagnosed breast cancer patient, offering them one-on-one support. And we also have wigs available in our office right here in Ventura, which are absolutely no charge to any cancer patient. At this time, the society would especially like to recognize Chairwoman and Supervisor Kathy Long for her longstanding commitment to the American Cancer Society in giving an important voice, reminding women 40 and older about the importance of getting a mammogram and a clinical breast exam every year to find breast cancer in its early, most treatable stage. Madam Chairwoman and fellow Board members, and Ms. Robinson, please accept these pink ribbon pins and pins as a token of our sincere appreciation for this October 2010 Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation.
Madam Chair. I'm sure you know, I'd like to share too that I really support this cancer month, you know, because I've really participated over at Ochsner for the survivors when they do the walk there. And also, by the way, just for information, my wife bought me a tie that I want to share today, a pink tie. So I told her last night that Lauren told me that we had to wear pink. So I didn't have a pink tie, so my wife went out and shopped for a pink tie, so I'm wearing that on behalf of her.
Very nice.
So anyway, congratulations.
Well, thank you for coming in, and we'll present this, and thank you for your good work.
And I have to say, Lauren has the greatest wigs. Oh, you found hot pink wigs for the walk.
All right, ready? One, two, and three, and one more, one, two, and three.
I also have to do a plug for Santa Paula Hospital. If you have to have a mammogram, go to Santa Paula Hospital. It's quick, fast, we're great service. Digital imaging.
And also our mobile mammography unit that's out there doing its good work too. Thank you.
Hey, ladies, let me just tell you, I always say, you want to get something done, you get the women involved. I love the idea, you've got national football, pink all over it, I mean, this is great.
I can just imagine watching football.
Thank you.
Just imagine what they're saying in the huddle.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you, Jim, for coming in. Okay, Board members, now, we are, we're done. We're going to close, oh, we have a 1:30. Oh, let me make two announcements. We have a 1:30, we'll be back for that. We have closed session, do we expect any announcements out of closed session?
We do not expect any announcements.
Okay, and just to say right now that next week, we're going to be in Moore Park for our board meeting, and it'll start at, what time? 6 o'clock in Moore Park, at Moore Park City Hall. And also tomorrow, we have a special meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and it is to have a joint strategic planning session that will be all day, it's going to be held at the Partridge Building, wherever the address is on that.
Human Services Agency.
Human Services Agency Building on Partridge, just for the public to know that we'll be doing that. I'm not in charge of ties. Okay, anything else to announce before we go into closed session? Mr. Zaragoza, did you have anything, was that from the last item?
I'll see if Foy wanted to use a pink tie tomorrow.
Okay, all right then, we'll go into closed session, be back at 1:30. Okay, good afternoon. We will continue the board meeting, Board of Supervisors, today, October 12th, our 1:30 time certain, and there isn't anything to announce out of the closed session discussion. So we will just move ahead with the agenda item then, on item 24. And this is an appeal, Planning Commission approval of a major modification. And we will start with the staff to introduce this item.
Good afternoon, I'm Andrea Ozde with the Planning Division, and the project before us today is AP 100012, an appeal of a major modification to CUP 4848 for the Habad of Oak Park. I was hoping to have the PowerPoint up and running, that's Exhibit 36. And we'd like to start with the Arlopa issue, which just came up last Thursday, actually we received that on Friday, so that is the new issue before us today that was not discussed at the Planning Commission hearing. So I'm going to begin with the Arlopa issue right now.
And also, if I might, I'd like to have County Council address the fact that this is new information that has just come to the county, that they are appealing also on the issue of Arlopa, that not having been discussed or vetted at the Planning Commission, if that's something that would be helpful for the county to have that information.
Yes, thank you. In this context, the Board can return the matter to the Planning Commission for further information, report, or study on any issue. And in this particular case, the Arlopa issue, which is Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, was not raised below, before the Planning Commission, appears it was raised for the first time on the appeal to the Board. Therefore, the Planning Commission did not really examine this issue. And so the Board has an option of conducting a hearing today and trying to sort through that factual determination, because I submit there is a factual component to that issue. It's not strictly a policy decision. Or if the Board feels it would be better for the Planning Commission to develop that evidence, they can return the matter to the Planning Commission and have the Planning Commission hold another hearing and report back to the Board on their findings, including the sorting through the factual issues.
Would they just limit the discussion only to Arlopa since they've already
And then when the report or subsequent decision comes, it could be appealed back to the board.
And you talk about they could assist with the factual tests. Can you give us some idea about what exactly that would be?
Well, I think the, in my view, Arlopa, especially with a land use issue of this type, applies two possible tests. One is called the substantial burden test, and the other is the equal terms test. The equal terms test is really a fact-driven test in particular, and I think that's the more serious question. But the equal terms test would include an analysis of whether another use that had a similar impact to the environment or the community as the proposed modification would have was treated more favorably than this request for modification that has a religious component to it. So ultimately, it's whether a nonreligious use was treated more favorably than a religious use when both would have the same impact or similar impact. You're never going to find something exactly the same, but an example would be, you know, a childcare center, for example, that was not religiously based, was a childcare center granted a modification that allowed 145 students, for example. So it would be factual-based. The planning staff would have to go through and see whether other applications were treated similarly or dissimilarly, and the applicant would have some burden of coming forward and showing that there was some disparity. But that's a very fact-based inquiry. And the board could have a hearing today and try to draw that out.
And also, this was just raised a few days ago, so I don't know if staff has had an opportunity to really look and find out about all the other potential similar uses that aren't religious.
No, we have not done any research. As Council said, we just received the email, so we haven't gone through to look at cases that would be similar.
To me, I just feel that I want to make sure that our decision, particularly when it comes to Arlopa, is well-founded and we can have confidence in it, because that's one of the situations where we can turn around and get sued and end up paying all the legal fees and everything else. But it seems like just out of our, you know, do our own due diligence and getting that information, I think, would help us at the board. I don't know how the other board members feel, but I think that would be the more prudent thing to do, is just have the Planning Commission only look at the factual basis of the Arlopa appeal, and have staff given the amount of time that they need in order to review it also, so we can have that information before us. Yeah, I think that, I think we should do that before, because otherwise we'll be here twice for the same issue. I don't know how the other board members feel.
I generally support that. I want to ask County Council, does that seem like, it seems like that would improve the county's position in any dispute over Arlopa if we follow that procedure?
I think it would, and it certainly gives us more confidence going forward if we knew that we, you know, had time to review all the facts first.
Is that something we do before the hearing?
You can do it before the hearing. You could hold the hearing and at the end of the hearing today make such a motion, but there's nothing prohibiting you from making that motion now at the outset of the, before the formal hearing is conducted.
It seems like it would save a lot of people, a lot of...
Yeah, I would favor that, because otherwise we have to do it twice here at the Board of Supervisors. After the Planning Commission makes this decision, more than likely it's going to get appealed back here. Would the appeals still stand, or? I guess it would come back to the board.
It would come back to the board. You know, it's not spelled out exactly, but I would think if you remanded it only on this specific issue, that the appeal on the other issues would still stand, and it would come back to the board, and any appeal would encompass that.
I'm sorry, there wouldn't be additional fees required of anyone, because it's a board-remanded request.
I would agree with that.
And I appreciate the fact that we have a good amount of people here today, but the idea that we would only have one hearing and then go to the Planning Commission and then have a second hearing and have you all come back again, I don't see that as being particularly productive. And then also that the public will have the ability to comment on the Planning Commission's points and decisions that they've made specific to this Arlopa, which is, as we have found before, a pretty big deal, that we want to make sure that we act as clearly and straightforward as we can on this with all the information that we can have on that. That would be my preference. I don't know if this would be the appropriate time to request that it go back to the Planning Commission?
Yes, it would be.
What's the timeframe that you're trying to get this done, though?
I would ask staff, what is the timeframe you feel you need in order to gather this kind of information, which we haven't been able to do yet?
I would say we probably need 30 days.
Pardon me?
30 days. In order to, in order to get it back in front of the Planning Commission, that means that we would have to do the research, prepare the staff report, and seven days before have it in their hands for them to review. So that's about two and a half weeks of research.
Okay. Well, you know, in the same sense, I sure don't want to get it right into the holidays if we can try to do our best at getting it back to the Board of Supervisors, so we're not in the middle of the holidays. But at this point, I think we need to get it to the Planning Commission, so that would be my suggestion, is that we get it to the Planning Commission in a month, in 30 days, and then back to the Board of Supervisors, probably in January then.
Madam Chair, I would support the recommendation too.
Let me ask, if the Arlopa comes in, and there's something that, before the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission sees that Arlopa is effective, it doesn't have to come back to us then, does it? Because all the other stuff, they would stand. Wouldn't they, wouldn't their original request stand? If they believe that we're not being equal access, I guess is what you'd be saying. Like you just used the same thing as a childcare, they have 145. Once, if for some reason we don't see it applies, then it would come back to us, otherwise we may not have to go through the two steps.
Well, yeah, you've identified a little nuance here. Because if the board remanded only for further study and report back on Arlopa, then the Planning Commission is not being asked to reconsider their underlying decision, which was to deny, in large part, the modification.
Because what I'm asking, because if we only do it that way, and they find that Arlopa applies, then we could be asking them to come back and go through a whole process that may not have to go...
Well...
I'm trying to say if we can do it in one process, how do we...
If I'm understanding you, I mean, you want to discuss the option of giving the Planning Commission the authority to change its decision?
Yeah, because, right, because if they find that Arlopa applies, then they can't deny based because of, but then there's no reason to have everybody wait to get back onto our board if that's what's going to happen. And then they would come back with some type of a standard themselves, saying 145, or 92, or 12, you know, whatever that, does that make sense, or am I...
No, it makes sense, but I still believe it's in your discretion whether you want to give the Planning Commission the authority to revisit its decision, basically, or you want to limit their report back to you only on the Arlopa issue and then leave it to your board to decide.
Well, I would guess it's potentially, more than likely, coming back to us, because the appellant may be appealing again, or a different appellant will be appealing. But I think the main, the main point, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it may well be back to us, no matter how we do this.
Maybe, I'm just saying if it doesn't...
Near my...
Do we want to take everybody through that process? If they come back and say it applies, okay, you could put it in the process, if it does apply, then give the Planning Commission the ability to make a new decision if they want to do that, instead of bringing it up here, that's all. And that's why we have the Planning Commission.
Allow for that option. I'd be happy to allow for that option, but I think...
No matter what the Planning Commission does, it's likely to be appealed back.
Yeah, then if somebody else wants to appeal that, then they can bring it back. But if somebody doesn't, then let the Planning Commission do that.
I agree. So I would go ahead then and make a motion to remand just that portion regarding Arlopa to the Planning Commission to look at it on the factual basis, and to have that go to the Planning Commission when it can be scheduled in at least 30 days out, and get that information back to the board if the Planning Commission still is, still applies.
Applies, then they can, if it doesn't, then it has to come back here.
Right.
I'd like to clarify what you just said.
I guess all I'm saying is if, if we find that Arlopa applies and it can't be denied based on what they have denied, then let the Planning Commission already do their work again, make a decision on, versus having us, because, and then at that point, if it wants to be appealed, it can be appealed again. All I'm saying is if we just do that one piece, then we come back up here and everybody makes all these arguments, I'm just saying the Planning Commission has the information to do that based on Arlopa. They've already made a decision.
But in that same tone, then if the Planning Commission were to find Arlopa is not a hurdle to this, then they can't reconsider their underlying decision.
Yeah, they can't reconsider, right. That's what I'm saying, I'm just saying if it's already, that's where I was coming from.
Okay, I understand your modification, then if that's how you want to modify the motion.
Does that make sense, everybody else? Kim, does that make sense?
Okay, let's clarify then. If the Planning Commission finds that Arlopa does apply, then the Planning Commission's decision at that point could be that, you know, they can move forward, then it would take an appeal to the Board of Supervisors, is that correct?
Well, but I think what's going to happen, if it does apply, then they're going to have to look at the whole thing and say, what has been acceptable in the county and everything else? Does that make, right? And then, that's what I mean, there's going to be a lot more to that than just an appeal to us if it applies. They're going to go through and say, okay, like you said, childcare, had 145 students, I mean, all those same, that's why I said there's more work than we're going to do.
I think that's what they're doing to decide whether Arlopa applies, not if Arlopa applies.
No, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Is that right?
Right, right.
Well, that's correct, but that, when we get semantic, you know, the word applies, I think, is not a good one, because clearly the law applies. And the question is, does Arlopa somehow preclude the decision that was made by the Planning Commission?
Yeah, that's a good one, yeah, preclude, right. Because once they find if it precludes that, then Planning Commission, or somebody's going to have to go back and just say, whatever levels, we're all out there, and otherwise that comes to us, and then we're going to go through all that? Somebody else probably has more expertise to do.
If the Planning Commission were to conclude legally they must grant the application, then they have the power to go ahead and grant the application. And then it can be appealed to the board. If the Planning Commission finds Arlopa does not prohibit the denial of the application, then the Planning Commission doesn't have to reconsider that, the denial stands.
And then it would come back to the board.
And then it would come back on appeal with no additional fees.
Right, exactly. Cut.
Okay. Does everybody have that? All right, so that will be the motion then, to send just the Arlopa portion back to the Planning Commission, and if they decide that Arlopa would be applicable, they can make their decision right there, and then it would have to be re-appealed, I believe, back to the board. Otherwise, it will come back to the board on its own. So that would be my motion.
Yeah, because, yeah, they'd be coming back.
Okay, so that's a motion.
Does the public?
Somebody wants to say something?
Well, we're not, we haven't opened for the public hearing, because with this action, the intent would be that this would go back to Planning Commission, and then the public would be engaged there, and then if it comes back here to the board, again, there's a public opportunity. All of the record stands that's been provided to the board via correspondence and emails, I mean, it's all part of the record today, but we're not planning to open the public hearing today.
And the Planning Commission will only look at that one issue, Arlopa. If it comes back to the board, we'll be looking at the entire case, grand new.
So, you know, certainly the public, all of you who are here today, who've taken time out, this is one of those awkward procedural processes that, you know, I can just say I'm, we apologize to the public for that, but if the importance of having this consideration by the Planning Commission for the factual component is important in the final deliberations of either that body or this body. And it is the equity and terms and the factual component piece of Arlopa.
And a lot of this is just because we got the appeal in between the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors a few days ago, and staff hasn't had a chance to provide, get the information for us.
And one of the reasons for my comment and trying to make that, where the Planning Commission, is so we don't end up with three and four or five months worth of delay on this kind of thing. If they can make a decision, we can get it done.
If I could try this, just for the benefit of the public, it's trying to figure out what's going to happen at the Planning Commission. What's going to happen at the Planning Commission first is, Arlopa is a law, and the issue of Arlopa has been raised, and so now the Planning Commission has to examine the case and find out whether Arlopa, the application of Arlopa, would prevent the Planning Commission from taking the action that the Planning Commission already has taken. And that's what the discussion will be about. That's probably a different kind of discussion than what many people thought they were going to be discussing here, but that's what you'll be discussing at the Planning Commission, so the more people understand Arlopa, probably the better that discussion will be.
And I agree too, because I think it's a real concern, a real concern that we need to take care of, you know, and look at Arlopa and make sure if it applies or not.
Is there a second on the motion? There's a second on that motion. So let's vote on that motion for the recommended action. And that is supported by the board, so that will be the action, and apologies.
Do we get free coffee?
Thank you. I'm sure we'll see you again.
hearing. I think that would seem most appropriate.